You got a short name, too.
That's right, you're sure, you're right. Good morning. We're a little discombobulated only because we got hit with a lot of things to sign this morning. Thank you for coming, all right? And you are?
My name is Greg Muller.
Oh, it's not in order. I was gonna say, good morning, Joe, okay. Joe, all right? And Greg. Roland.
That's Greg.
Yeah, okay, Greg. Joe, Roland, Amanda. There we go. Good morning. Thank you for coming. Obviously, you know why we asked you here. And I guess, would you like to give a little, give us a little bit of information and then we have some questions to ask? Yep, and, and a lot of times, my questions, most of them get answered, so that's a nice way.
So if I may, I'll start, but I'd love to get introductions from you guys.
All right. All right, I'm Ruth Mooney, Chairman of the Board of Selectment, born and raised in this community.
John Pike.
He's Vice Chair.
Claude Patton, I've been in Belmont for forty years.
How long have you been in?
Thirty-five.
Do you go by Sonny or Claude?
Well, Sonny, usually, that's the popular name.
And obviously, Gene Bowden is our Town Administrator.
I've actually met Amanda and Joe.
All right, and. Yeah, thank you.
And you thought I was hard on you.
Well, it's, you know, it's good, it's in the morning, usually our meetings are in the afternoon, no, we have meetings in the morning. But you would like to start, Amanda? Oh, yeah, wear a blouse, I'll tell ya.
Yes, I'll go ahead and start, but thank you for inviting us, we really appreciate the opportunity. North Branch, just to give you a flavor of who we are, North Branch has been in business for about sixty-one years. We, we are of Concord, our home base is in Concord, which is about twenty minutes away from here, so we're not far.
Now that you've got them speed. I just did a time distance calculation in my head.
Twenty, twenty, twenty-five. Depends on if you get behind a truck or if there's road work, which is always the case, I used to work in Laconia, so I understand, you gotta pad at least ten minutes not knowing what they're doing on the road work during this time of year. But anyways, back to North Branch, like I said, we're, our home base is in Concord, we, we have about sixty-five employees, we're sixty-five strong. We have a great team that really, even though we are owned by four partners, Joe being one of them, it's not a family business, but it is a business that is, really is, is, has that family culture to it. We do have an extensive resume, as you've seen in our packet, which is probably why we're here, which is really exciting for us. So I'd like to give the opportunity, as we have had introductions here, to, to really understand what each of our roles are. My role today really is just to keep these guys in line, so.
No, good luck with that.
And then, and then that's all right. But how about we start, since we're just going in this direction, but I'd like to start with Joe, just because Joe's, Joe will tell you a little bit about his role as the PD.
Great, thanks Amanda. Joe Campbell, President of North Branch Construction. I spent the majority of my career as a project manager for North Branch, actually joined North Branch twenty years ago, my high school life coach got me a job as summer laborer. I just fell in love with the construction industry, the camaraderie of job site, and I, over the years, I grew up at the ranks, and I love this company, I'm very passionate about it. The reason I'm here today is my proposed role would be what we call Project Executive. So I, I have heavy involvement during pre-con, pre-construction period, which I commend you folks for choosing selecting construction management, because we're very passionate about it, about ninety-five percent of our work is construction management. That's certainly the delivery method that we feel is most ethical and gets you your best bang for your dollar. So as a project executive, I'm just an additional layer to the process in terms of I can come in at any minute, I, I use my experience in the pre-construction period to offer, share my expertise and, and help the design push forward. And, you know, if, if a project manager wants to take a vacation, we, we have overlap, we have coverage, so it's, it's a layer. And one of the things that makes North Branch a little unique is where there's four principles of the firm. Our business model is to have a principle assigned to every project, so we have invested interest in that project going smoothly. Our geographical area that we complete work is within a hundred mile radius of Concord, a very small area in terms of a construction company of our size. So our reputation is everything, because we're working in such a small area, we have a vested interest in projects going well, so that it, where there's only four of us that own the company, it really limits how many projects we can complete each year, and we're happy with that, so we complete about fifteen projects every year. We're very selective in the projects we go after, this project is, is very attractive to North Branch, it's right down the street for us, it's municipal, and police stations are just fun to build with the various components. So that's enough about me, and I'll, I'll talk more about my role when I turn over role, we'll talk about his role.
Hi, good morning, my name is Roland Pothier, Project Manager for North Branch, I've been with North Branch for, for six years, I've been in the construction business a little over forty years, I had my own business for, for a time, done a lot of different types of projects.
You're a day yourself.
Was that a day yourself? Well, you know, they can, they're not gonna make this here, so, so we're, we're originally doing last, which must mean, you know, you save the best for last, so we must be the best company for this job, which I sincerely believe that we are, we've done. Personally, I just finished a remodel project at Tomlin Road, the Police Department, they were, it was an active, active facility, we were in it, it was some renovation work to upgrade their, their heating and their, and their, so we were in there doing day-to-day, working hand-in-hand with the Police Department through that whole process, and we have, we have a full understanding of, you know, just what has to, what, what the, the function of the Police Force is, and how they have to operate on a day-to-day basis, we're really, you know, well in tune with, you know, how their schedule works and, you know, communication is a hundred percent of, 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 of the job.
I'd like to say nobody schedules a bank robber, right?
Nobody schedules a bank.
If you plan out your day, I can just imagine, see if you plan out your day with your to-do list, does it ever get to it?
No. So, so my role is to work with, with you folks, which is always a pleasure working with, with town, town people and, and planning a project. I know you've got some schematic design, but you know, you work with the design team to help them come up with the, the economic, the best, best design that, you know, and the cheapest thing that will keep the job well, basically, is what you guys are looking for, because you, you have, you have two masters, you have to serve the Police Department, but you don't have to have to serve the community, you're trying to, you know, get the best dollar for the taxpayers' money, and that's, that's always from the bottom, bottom of your interest, so. So my role is to work with the design team, help them, you know, get the best, best product, and, you know, offer some suggestions along the way, you know, just from our experience, things that we've done through, that we've seen. And then, I buy out the project and I schedule everybody, I, you know, hire the subcontractors, you know, we go out, we bet out the, we do the estimating, you know, estimate during, during the, during the initial design phase, we'll do a couple of budget estimates to make sure we're on track, if we have to change the budget. And then we go into, and then once we finalize, we get a guaranteed maximum price, you know, we look at, we look at the subcontractors, and we, we convince them, oh, we wanna use the subcontractors. The town has input, you know, we wanna use Joe X Y Z, the local guy, we really want him, we want him bidding the project, you know, we welcome all of color kind of input, you know, and we'll, we'll, we'll vet that to make sure they qualify and can do the project in our timeframe, but, you know, our role is to get the best price for you and get it in a schedule that's, that fits your schedule and get them as quickly as possible if you guys are moving in, so. And that's my job in that show, and we have all kinds of tools, technical tools and things at, at disposal that our companies are confident is costly and operating.
Would you be the project manager on site?
I wouldn't be on site, and that, the guy I understand is.
Oh, okay, all right.
He's the guy.
I got the, I got the, okay.
You know, I, I always, I always kinda laugh because he, he always asks people for recommend letters or recommendations, and, you know, I'm excited, behind the scenes, doing all the estimating and sweating about the budget, and, you know, are you gonna meet the schedule, and calling the guys, but it's almost the guy here in the center that's on the job every day, every day, it's, oh, great, you get great job, and, oh, my God.
They get all the credit, always, they get all the credit.
So, and that's fine, because that's the way we work, you know, we're, we're a team, okay, and, you know, we try to support each other.
And if I may, it's not to say that, that Roland doesn't come to the project, he does on a, on a, on a weekly basis for owners, as they call owners meeting, but, but Roland is also running multiple projects, you know, at, at the time of Greg, and I'm, I think now it's a good segue, segue for Greg, but Greg, this is his only focus, and Greg's here on a daily basis, so.
I would like to say, so if you don't like Greg, we should just leave right now. I'm, I'm here sometimes, our competition doesn't bring a superintendent interview, which blows my mind, because this is the gentleman that has your, probably a little of his, not your best, but, but Greg is here every day, there's not a subcontractor that comes on site without Greg, so I'll turn it over to Greg, we'll talk about your role.
Thank you, I, I don't know if I can make it last this long, it's all.
What is your current workload? If we awarded this to you, what are we, what's your current workload at this point?
This project actually starts on my first day, so I thought that was assigned as well, but Greg's project, he's working up in Ashland right now, and it finishes perfectly for the September start here.
Okay.
And Roland, we, we don't over, over assign our people, so Roland has full capacity as well.
Instead of me driving Concord to Ashland, I would just come here.
What are you doing in Ashland?
It's an apartment renovation.
Okay. Oh, yeah, okay, yeah.
So that'll finish up in the summer. My name is Greg Muller, I'm one of those business cards there that.
You're the top one.
That's where it really should be.
That's where it is, right there.
This is, despite the boyish appearance, I've been doing this for twenty-five years, I do have to wear glasses. First half of my career was something more in lines of what, what Roland does, so a lot of buyout, a lot of purchasing, initial schedule, project planning, RFI, submittals, changes, close out, a lot of paperwork in the building, building. Second half of the twenty-five years is the guy on the site, making decisions, safety, schedule, and quality, trying to turn the paper into something that we can all be proud of. I built hospitals, I built schools, I built fire stations, I like the public projects because there's so much on the line for you people, and it's a police station, it's a, it's a, it's a hub, it's a business of activity, there's all kinds of stuff going on, and it's something that you're gonna look back after the job's done, like it's a decent looking building, you know? So those are fun, those are fun when there's a lot of community interest. Huggins Hospital in Wolfboro, I built that. The whole renovation, the whole new building, that was my project. Tremendous amount of community impact there, just people walking by in the street, telling us stories about the old building, you know, us trying to work on a campus with medical imaging equipment coming and going, with an ambulance coming in and out. This is gonna be the same thing as I, as I understand the site. You guys will have your planned prescription drug take backs, you'll have gun buybacks, you'll have unplanned stuff, the, the state will call and they'll have some detainee they need to bring to the police station, and they gotta bring people in. So you, you folks are busy, we're busy. If you look at any of these diagrams, and they do come in, in order, but just get a sense of like, the blue is the police, the orange is the construction site. Knowing very little about exactly what we can do or what we can't do, I laid out these different scenarios and I kind of gave you the.
So I could add to that too, Greg, we did, we're not making a decision today, we just wanted to demonstrate that there's options and you're flexible.
Yeah, like I said, we don't know what you'll let us do, we don't know what we can get away with here, if that makes sense, but usually there's a give and take, so the option that's completely off the board is relocating the Police Department, because that's just not possible. So you're looking at option A, which should be on the top of your list, which, this, as I see it, is the safest thing that we can do for you folks and for us. It gives us a completely fenced-in construction site, it leaves you folks with a couple of ways in and out, using parts of the park for parking, and it keeps us apart from each other, we've got our fence, we've got your fence, there is communication, but it's, it's less urgent, there's less opportunity for us to interact. Moving on from there.
I will just have to interject. Unfortunately, we cannot use the park. The park was built with Land Water Conservation Fund grant monies many, many, many years ago, back in the early nineties, and it is, has to be reserved in perpetuity in its current state, so the area that is behind the fence, or the fenced-in area that starts behind the police station, has to remain.
As is.
Can't be used for any purpose.
Yeah. Sorry.
So, so the, um, is, is what, what Greg says, hey, these, these, these are, these are saying.
That's one way to go, that's not possible. You've got a couple of other scenarios, so just to start with B.
So ripping that one out?
Sorry.
If you focused on B, again, okay, so taking the park element out of there.
Yeah.
You're, you're still gonna have a component where we're trying to take our building site, which is right now the meeting house, and, and add on this parking area, which the police are currently using, so it's linked on the building site, which is the, it takes the police parking and pushes it out onto gravel, which maybe that's not even a possibility.
Nope, B doesn't work either.
Excellent. So.
We do have some parking, which is across the street.
So there's other areas.
Right, right, right at the end.
See where you say, see where it says Nelson Court? All right, that parking area is ours, obviously, you know, it's hard, well, maybe some of, some of the police officers could run from the police station to there, it might be good, but I'm, I'm sure.
Well, if he took the two vehicles that we keep.
Of course, and those are gonna be gone.
We don't like day one, you don't run anymore, I have a dog, doesn't.
So there's, so like, oh, there's, there's other options on the other side of the law.
Yeah, I think option B is just a concept of saying, there's a need for some additional laydown area, where that ends up being, we'll figure out, but it kind of defines it as an option, that, that can be flexible.
Okay, so no gravel.
I'd like to say yes, but.
We go right to D.
Actually, well, actually, C.
C.
C is okay.
Okay, let's look at C. So C has us, the construction team, in this kind of gravel area.
Right.
As it stands right now, under the, the COVID- nineteen crisis that we're all in, the park is closed.
Yeah.
So that parking lot really is not being utilized at this point, I don't, we don't have any crystal ball to know what's gonna happen, but clearly, if we had to do something, we, that is available to us for, for use of some sort.
So that, if that becomes ours in the C scenario here, then I'm, what I'm trying to show you folks is that you, you guys are maintaining your, your parking right where it is now, we'd probably have to reestablish a curb cut so you could get it, I think that's a drainage-related issue.
Yeah, and, and again, we'll have to, those are things we can, we can figure out, that's, that's, you know, yeah. We know it's gonna be a tight site, no lift center bots, and.
The C option, we're trying to say, hey, we're here and you're here at the same time, it's not convenient for either of us, and there's gonna need to be a safety presence, which is.
It's a marriage.
Well, that's one thing about, I mean, to look at, to look at the last, even if you excluded on the D, excluding the gravel, that's about as constrained as I can make it for myself, as hard as I can do it, we're just fencing in our site, we're needing to stage deliveries on the road, we need to be super coordinated with you guys, because we're gonna have days where I need to sit a crane in your parking lot and fly you.
Yeah. Yeah.
And that gets to the other point that I need to make with you folks, is there has to be someone on the police side that is there, is immediately available to me.
Yeah.
And we're gonna have a meeting in the morning, and.
Yeah, none of, none of that's an issue, and, and as far as each one of these diagrams I see, and you have all these cars here, I've already made arrangements, there's gonna be very few more vehicles on this site, so.
So any flexibility like that is huge.
I'll be honest with you, most of what's gonna happen at that Police Department is we walk in, you know, we're gonna have an access point that we have to bring in a booking suspect or something.
Right.
But as far as personal vehicles and cruisers parking there.
That's a huge help.
It's not gonna happen.
That's a huge help.
The only thing that I can't do, that I can't help you with right now, is removing that trailer.
That's good.
Because I've got detectives working on that.
So then that's a, that's.
It's kind of ruining the building a half.
It's good for me to know, so when I kind of dial this in, and I'm thinking more closely about how I'm gonna get around that corner of the site, I'll know that, that trailer's gotta stay, okay.
Trailer, you're relocating on the site, but just.
You know, I wish you could, but the problem is, it's tied into the computer system and the phone system, so I'm not quite sure how far they could carry the.
I'm just saying, and, and carry the.
If you put the wiring in front of the building, just to get, I'm just looking at how tight that clearance is between the new building and. I mean, it, it's very possible to, to just carry the wires that distance and, and hook it in, the trailer's nothing, it's just a matter of knocking some blocks out.
And, and why do, why do we choose to put it there, two reasons, the sun, because we own, you know, they were in there all winter, and we know job trailers are what they are, all right? So we use it for sun, and then it was easy access to the wiring and whatever, and then obviously, around the front of the building, to, you know, you'd drive in and see the trailer, now obviously, when it's under construction, that's a whole different, it's a whole different ballgame, all right, I mean.
And it's not, you know, really a cost issue, like cost.
It's, it's another option.
It's nothing to move yet, we can look at. Well, as your construction manager, our job is to kind of price options, weigh options, and each of Greg's diagrams here, there's different efficiencies, so it's our, we, we think of it as we're acting as your agent in your interests, so our job is to lay out options, and then we make decisions together as a team. And, and what's so critical is communication, and Greg is an excellent communicator, you will know that, you know, two weeks from now, that a crane's coming, or it just, maybe you should talk a little bit about how you communicate that, that might be helpful.
The way that it worked for me at Concord Hospital, this was an extremely complicated renovation, I got to build the new OR suite and the whole central sterile, which is, you know the hospital, it's right in the heart of the whole place.
Right in the middle.
So you have a meeting with, well, it was Wes Reed at the time, who's the Director of Construction Operations at the hospital, so he's a guy that has a lot of pull in there, and if I needed parking, or if I needed an area to be closed off, he could make it happen for me. And at the same time, he would be feeding me information about, there's an ortho surgery going on, don't worry about it, they make more noise in the operating room than you guys are gonna make, so do what you gotta do, but tomorrow, we've got this particular surgeon who's very sensitive to noise, and sometimes you guys have dispatch operations that you have to be quiet for. So you have to be quiet, and anything that you're planning on doing is sort of have to buy into everything that, that we bought with the trades, which is, you're gonna be inconvenienced by the fact that you're working on it.
Well, I think, I think our chief has already pre-warned everyone that's in that building, that they have to understand, this is, this is, there's, you gotta make, my motto is, you gotta make a mess before you get to the end result, and, and it is, it's gonna be. Not really, I mean, you're gonna, you're gonna have, no matter.
Neighbors too, I mean, our, our goal is to come in, we recognize that this is a neighborhood, you wanna be a good neighbor and be respectful, and, and Greg is, is, that's one of Greg's talents, it's hard to really demonstrate today how Greg accomplishes that, but, I mean, I've seen you do things like three-week look-ahead schedules, Greg, it's really helpful for clients and, and, just, just a great communicator, I think communication's act of value, if folks know that, that something's gonna happen a few days from now, it just, it makes everything run smoothly. And where you're already making preparations with our project chief, that's fantastic.
Yeah, it's tremendous that you're thinking about it in, in those terms, but.
Trying to head off any potential issues before they become issues, so.
So you'll need to know with the small site, the days, the times when I need to encroach upon something here that is gonna be some underground work, there's gonna be some high work, there's gonna be lifts, there's gonna be dumpster swaps the whole time, so there'll need to be a bit of a routine, and it's all communicated at a meeting where we talk about today, this is what we're doing today, and this is the plan in any way, a star in the ship, you guys are here twenty-four hours a day, we're here seven, three-thirty, or some limited time, this is what we have planned. And hopefully, it all goes according to plan, it rarely does, somebody doesn't show up, somebody's early, you guys have an emergency you gotta deal with. So the plan starts, and then there's constant communication, or I'll say, look, we don't need those parking spaces today, but we do need them on Wednesday now, because that's when I've rescheduled work, and there's a back and forth there, and oh, by the way, don't forget, the crane is coming, that's the big problem, that's the big problem.
Yeah.
So there's the discussion of the day, and then constant communication during the day about changes to the plan, and then planning things in the future, and it needs to be kind of a one-on-one thing with me and someone from the Police Department who has the ability to make things happen on the other side of the fence.
Is there anything that prevents us at any particular time from closing this little piece of road down, like even if it's just from the parking lot here?
Actually, you know, we, we.
Local traffic only?
Yeah, we somewhat do it, I, I think if, we only have a few residents.
Right, right, right.
So if we made sure that they had access in and out of their house.
Right.
I don't think we would have an issue. The bus group would be a potential issue in the fall.
Okay.
However, that could be, that could be changed as well.
As long as they're notified or whatever, yeah.
The appropriate.
Right out here.
Fuller Street.
This one, Fuller Street, Fuller Street, just kind of, well, I'm thinking crane-wise, you know, that type of thing, I mean, it doesn't have to be all the time, but I guess.
But I think there are, I think there are not an issue.
I mean, there's, there's School Street, and there's, what's the other street over there, by the, Yale Street.
But, you know.
For local traffic.
Behind here is, is an easy access.
Yeah, yeah.
Danny's office is an easy access.
Think of Close Sergeant Street, that portion of.
I mean, you could literally shut that door off, aside from, aside from getting Ferguson out.
Sure, yeah.
You don't have an issue.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't think that'd be the full duration project, but.
No, but at least, it's gonna be times, that's exactly right.
We don't use the park in the fall, so from October first, now they're saying a start date of possibly September, so it's gonna take you what, take this down and get your excavation done, you're gonna be a couple, three, four weeks? Because my next question's gonna be, when are you gonna set the concrete?
Oh, the concrete's going in before.
I, I, hold on, that would, don't, you, they're gonna answer it.
It's gonna go in, no, it's going to go in, oh, no, no.
Oh, yes, yes, I, I don't want any false promises.
I think you have a, a site with a grade issue, and you're probably gonna have a retaining wall maybe, so, so that might be, just in my head, oh, jeez, if we were ever gonna take a piece of Sergeant Street, it would be then, and then digging.
I'm not so worried about the use of Sergeant Street, but when I look at this map, that's an easy way to gain some more space.
Yeah, maybe you just take.
If you've got a crane, you, it's easier to work above it than it is below it.
Yeah, I agree, right, it's a great idea.
So, and if it isn't gonna affect these people, because Glenn can get out the other way, and those people can go that way.
Right.
So, but my, a question again, if you have a start date of September.
That's what we understood from the RFP, is that what's the desire?
No, my, my question goes back to the concrete. If it takes you till October to tear this building down and get your site. If it takes you till October to tear this building down and get your site ready, which would be quite an accomplishment in its own, god knows what's under this building, when you move this building, what there's, for pipes or.
Your concern is about maybe the concrete in before the snowfall.
Well, frost, yes.
Cost issues.
No.
That's the fun part about being where I'm at, is that we got a shop, full of concrete blankets, full of temp heaters, if there was some kind of.
I don't want that, not gonna have that.
It's not ideal, cause it adds cost to the project.
Well, but, that's, I guess, you know, we, if we handle these problems rather than wait a day to discuss where we're gonna pack stuff, now's the time to do it. Because not then, when we got cold coming, I mean, it can get cold in November and freeze up in the middle of November, hasn't in the last couple of years, but weather changes at its own will. But we're not having heat blankets and we're not having that, I'm gonna tell you right now.
Okay.
Well, the barrier starting early, it's just a matter of getting through your design, getting the three button board, what the design is, and getting a price, I mean, I can't, we can't give the price until we have, you know what you want.
I understand.
So that's, that's the key, so.
Do you have a in-house architect?
We do not, and I can tell you why, there's so many fantastic architects in New Hampshire, that we'd be shooting ourselves in our, in our own foot because most of our work comes from actually designing.
Yep.
We're builders, we're good builders. We do complete some projects, design-build, however, in those scenarios, the only real difference is the architect's contract is on our side of the ledger. We basically meet folks and figure out, you know, personalities and the type of project and we would solicit two or three proposals from folks that we think would be a good match, and as a team, we make the decision together. Really, it, it, it's just not efficient to have it in-house.
Nope, nope, okay.
One of the things I'd like to just highlight is safety, we have a reputation in the industry as being one of the safest contractors. Everybody can tell you they're safe, but we, we have the lowest workers comp mod rate in our, in our workers comp group, insurance group, and that's, that's data right there, that speaks to our performance. And it's not only the safety of the workers on site, but it's also neighbors, kids running, you know, playing in the streets, the police department, everybody's safety is in our, in our interest. And Greg is, has a tremendous track record of, of safe projects and we, in addition to our safety director that, that paid for out of our fee, this is overhead as far as I'm concerned, we also have third-party inspections that come unannounced, Greg doesn't know when they're coming, and they come, and, and I have the ability to share those inspection reports with the town and we're hoping that safety is a concern for you folks as well.
And it will be, I mean, obviously, we have the middle school up here around the corner and, and I've noticed at times when we have meetings and the school lets out, there's kids that walk through here and walk by and that kind of thing, so it is, yeah, attract, that's exactly right, that and sidewalk superintendents, we are noted for having a lot of good sidewalk superintendents in town, so.
Everybody's attached.
Yeah, yeah.
If the community were going to look to potentially going with a design-build option, does your schedule allow the flexibility that you would be able to begin soliciting and, and finding a firm that you felt would meet our needs immediately?
Absolutely, and that would be, because we do have a little bit of a crunch, I, I would say it's, we're, it's, it's a respectful amount of time, it's, it's, it's not ideal, like projects such as this would typically, you guys have already done a lot of legwork and I wouldn't want that, those efforts that have already been done to be lost, that information can be used and then massaged as we, whatever we decide, but the short answer is yes, Gene. We would wanna, I mean, I would wanna be start soliciting proposals next week to meet that timeline.
I mean, our goal initially is to get this building, we are in the process right now of taking the mill, the Belmont Mill, which is located across the street from Town Hall, and getting that ready for the relocation of the meeting rooms that are in this building here and the general assistance office, so that this building will be empty midsummer probably.
Sooner the better, yeah.
So that it can come down. There are some little things that have been, we've talked a lot about the metal ceilings in this building, potentially trying to save some of them for future use in some other location, not, not, yeah, they are. So those are just some things that we've been talking about, but we're trying very hard to, as the board has said, get that concrete in the ground, hopefully.
Yep, before frost.
Yeah, that should be everybody's goal and target, for sure. Yeah, projects like this, it's, it's just, it's all comes down to communication, hiring the right folks.
Guys, you have any questions? They've pretty much, you know, as I expected, most, all of my questions have been answered.
But you brought up a good point about the students coming, cause they do walk, so probably closing off Sergeant Street from over here to here.
In Canada. North Branch is no stranger to tight, constrained sites. I feel like, I feel like more of our projects are, just a quick story, we just built the, the I-95 liquor store for the state and we had, I don't know if you're familiar with the store, but it's the busiest liquor store in the state, I think revenue was something we could really hit all of the weekend or something. Anyhow, we had to keep that store, which was already on a tight, constrained site, open throughout the duration of construction. There wasn't a parking space empty in this store at any given point of the project. And just to put it in perspective, the plans showed that the new store, the corner of the soft end of the new building, the building right next to it, was six inches apart from the existing store, and we were like, wow, that's, that's tight. Well, it turned out after we laid out the new building and the surveyors came and everything else, it was actually six inches into the new building, so we had to rip off a piece of the existing building, but that was an incredibly tight site with a lot of eyes on North Branch with that I-95 circle and that, that project went flawless. So we, we're just no stranger, we, a lot of our clientele, like Sergeant is one of our biggest clients, our college, so we're constantly on campus renovating occupied buildings. Eversource is another one of our, our clients, we complete three or four projects every year for Eversource, and they tend to have occupied foundations, so it just, we're, we're very familiar, it's how we're structured, it's part of our process.
I think there's one thing I wanted to make sure that we, I know that it'd be important that you as well, is, is that how our process as, as construction manager with, with vetting out all of our subcontractors before, and, and we, if you wanna discuss that, Joe, it might be something helpful to.
Sure, Roland could add to it too, having been in business now for sixty-one years, we pretty much know all of the subcontractors in the state and we have a list of pre-qualified subs, these are subs that have worked for us before, they're proven, they have proven track records and being in the schedules, being professional, being safe, quality of work is high, so we already come with that database, but in the process, especially when there's municipal dollars involved, we always will put ads up in the local rack in terms of, you know, hey, we're looking for subcontractors, that way folks in, you in your seats can say, hey, listen, we, we put it out there, we, you know, we invited you to bid on the project. And there is a quality, it's our responsibility to hire the subs that are fully qualified, you know, have the proper assurances to protect the town, so there is a vetting that goes on. But Roland will assemble a fit list that we present to the town and I want them to say, everybody has veto power. Chief, you might not like Joe the excavator down the street, cause you have, you pull home records out, who knows, you know, so there's a vetting, you have a veto, and, and we do as well, because we, we have your interest in, in part. So that's, that's the process as well.
Obviously, we were very fortunate to get the support of the taxpayers in the town of Belmont. This is the first time that a bond issue on a building or a bond issue of this size has ever passed, the very first time. We all put lots of time and as taxpayers, we're very passionate about how our money is spent, alright? And we added some money to it only because we, we, I was confident it was gonna pass, but you always, you never know. And obviously, in my mind, I have a price tag that I'm gonna be looking for, okay? So that's gonna be important, that dollars and cents are gonna have to be watched very, very closely. The chief is working on some of the soft costs, you know, getting things that he's going to need and, and hopefully some grant money for some of the things specialized, specialized things, alright, within. But just because the bond issue passed at three point five is not, you know, where I wanna see the price at the end, so that is something that we're gonna be watching very closely and that's something that's gonna be huge when it comes to, you know, subcontractors and that type of thing.
Again, whether, I still, the process that you folks have selected with construction management, whether you hire the architect or us, we're all design-build, I think it's important, and I think this would help put, put you ease a little bit, we approach design-build, even if we're hiring the architect, we still approach it open book as if we're construction management, so the accounting is no different, completely transparent. You see all the costs, you see all the subcontractor bids, you see everything, we're completely transparent. And I bring that up because some, some of our competitors approach design-build differently. Think of a scenario where if they're designing it and they use a lesser material, a dollar saved, is a dollar earned to that contractor? I'm not saying there's, that there's shady acts going on, but there is an incentive to take a shortcut because it's a dollar saved in contract. We don't approach that way, we're completely open book. And, and if you folks want the architect on our side of the ledger, I welcome it, I'd have no problem with that. Quite honestly, it's a little more risk for us and we do typically charge a higher fee because there's more risk in that scenario. A misconception to some, sometimes of those who aren't in the industry, they think that design-build eliminates the cost of design because it's all under one entity, it's really not true. There's still the same amount of design efforts needed for a design-build project compared to a construction management project. I would honestly advise the town to have the architect on your side of the ledger for the, for just that chain of command, you know, full control. You get, the architect has a role in the project of reviewing the requisitions, making, you know, another set of eyes on the work, it's just, it's another service that I think you get the full bang for your buck and your dollar if it's on your side of the ledger, but we're open to you. Is there any questions in regards to the process, I, I mean, you folks don't do this every day, I mean, there's no questions that, is a, is a stupid question, is there any, is there anything I could explain further on the process?
No, 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 guys?
You're welcome, did a good job. Is there any kind of a survey, you know, ledge, for instance, we're talking about scheduling started, and getting foundations for it, it's the first thing that comes to my head was, what's on the site, we know if this site's legging, we know what, what the.
Have no idea.
It's been here for, what, hundred and forty years, so what's under it, that's what I see.
And all the utilities that come in or out.
There is a sewer.
Excellent.
Yeah, we do sewer and water.
Sewer and water out here, there's a drain that you've seen right in the middle of the parking lot, connects to a drain in front of our garage door, I don't know what's a particular area.
Other than we do know the sand.
There is sand and I believe.
But we don't know if it's all sand.
There's water underneath the building. All, all the more reason that, that there's an incentive to take this building down as soon as.
Right, yes.
There's some civil engineering that needs to happen, once the building comes down, they actually do borings and the structural engineer needs that information of the soil conditions to be able to design a foundation, so it's a process.
It is.
Should we push the process, that's, that's our responsibility in the pre-construction period, but another thing in regards to budget, what's nice about this process is there's gonna be upwards of three estimates done throughout the process, it kind of helps steer the design and keep the project on budget. And we have a proven track record of, of getting the project, you can't go back and ask for more money.
Right, that we cannot.
That's not an option.
No, and unfortunately, or fortunately, I mean, we're looking at, at, we're looking at financing at the moment, a couple different, because.
Rates are good.
Right, right, the rates are good and, and it's really, my feeling is it's, it's a perfect opportunity to be doing this because of where the rates are going and that type of thing, so we're working on that, which will help.
Some of the other things that we do that I'm not sure if our competition does, but we do that, every employee has a background check, that, that I think would, and we have, we have to have clients like Eversource that require every subcontractor to have a background check as well, I think the chief can come in and see an ankle bracelet or something like that of a mason or something like that, but, or you may just show up and see us walking in the back door of our building. I would be really, we've been looking for you, thanks for showing up. That's happening. The state liquor commissioner told us, I don't wanna see any of your people in the store, but at three-thirty, you're all welcome.
Yeah. True construction.
So that's just another level of vetting that we do, everybody will look professional, our sites are incredibly clean, it's, it's our image, so we want folks to be respectful and make sure we keep a clean site, a clean site is a safe site. I have a question for the chief, it's like, if I may, what, what is the shift schedule for your department?
We're twenty-four seven. Right now, because of rescheduling with this COVID crisis, I'm running two cars on midnight shift, so they're running twelve-hour shifts right now, they're, we've kind of refined them a little bit to twelfths and eights. Really not an issue, as soon as I get this computer issue sorted, we're with the cars, we'll be doing most of their work remotely in their cruisers and just transferring the data into the PD. So the actual business side of it will be minimal as far as cruiser interruptions or there won't be any private vehicles on site, they'll be parked offsite and they'll be walking, walking into work. And the cruisers will probably occupy some of that parking lot across the street or other places over the circuit.
It will impact the response time.
Response time, there's gonna be a lot, so response time is nothing, it's just me walking out of my office to get the car, find the piece of work. And by then, it's, that situation's over, so.
In London, we had, I was bringing you, I have to notice one of the cruisers, maybe it's just a little cruiser that didn't want to shut off, but it was constantly sitting and running and I thought, oh, well, they hit the ground.
Doesn't have a dog in it, didn't have a dog in it?
Just sound like a gas truck to the chief.
Yeah, if you see one running here, it's because our K-9's in it.
Oh, really?
So it's being air conditioned.
Yeah. The other question I had was, are you, are you a local dispatch center inside of the police?
We, we dispatch sixteen hours a day, so generally, my people, we're split, now they're going back to the street weekly, Monday through Friday, we'll open up at seven, close at eleven, and the sheriff's department will take the phones after that, so we will be, we will be dispatching out of here, but you're not gonna be interrupting us really that much, the only thing that might become a nuisance is the backup alarms on the machinery, that'd be about it. As far as the banging and crashing, we are listening to pretty geese across the street every day, so.
Yeah, that's the other thing, you know, you worry about the kids, we have, we have the geese right across the street, they might be a bigger issue than the kids.
We can't afford an alarm system.
Thirty of them. But their boy's Chris, my boy got attacked by a turkey tyke this weekend. Her experience, she had chicks. She had chicks, it went from, oh, look at the cute chicks, to sheer turds. It was like Mount Asswell movie, it was hilarious.
Yeah, that's cause they were chasing her, not you.
So I'm not really concerned about the construction aspect, though, I mean, we'll make it as, as easy for you to operate here as possible. And noise-wise, if it's a day where you're really gonna be pounded and hammered and, and it does affect, I'll just transfer the phones and everything over to them, that's not a problem.
But we're flexible.
We can, we can make, we can make things work, I mean, I need this done, I really do, I mean, I, I've got two people in a trailer right now and I should have another trailer, but we're, we're bursting and, and we're starting to really pick up speed again, and we're the busiest town department, Belmont, we are, I mean, we had, we had over seven hundred arrests last year in town and we're busy, so.
If the races start again, I'm sure that, that should be well.
Yeah, well, that, hopefully that's done for this year as well as the concerts that have broken out, and so I think we'll be okay, but our cooking room is a very, very busy place, we average two to two and a half people a day, and so. busy place, we average two to two and a half people a day, and, uh, so, right now it's down a bit because people are just starting flexi-ling, but the more people that hit the public like they are now, we're just getting in the day, our weekend was very, very busy.
So, I mean, what side of, where's, is there a side of the park there existing?
There is, right at the end of, right at the end of the building, and there's one stall. And usually, last year, that was, that stall was used fifty-seven times with cars being seized, so we couldn't even use it as a driving, because the cruisers, the folks, we had to walk them in.
Walk, yeah.
Yep, so, that's why this kind of, this building's gonna be a better build with the three, we can, we can actually house a vehicle that they're gonna do a search for on, and not impact the booking area or anything else, so, safety's huge, saving that building right now is ridiculous, there isn't any-
Do you not have a safe, uh, point of travel from Sallyport to the booking area?
Right through the patrol room.
That's unfortunate.
Oh, it's bad.
You were gonna ask.
Are we all cleared to demo this particular building?
We are, except, oh, well, while we're not cleared, we have the general assistance downstairs that we have to move to the-
You have programs to move out, has there been a survey of any kind?
I don't, has there been a survey, no.
No, uh, there was, there was, there is an existing survey of the, um, police department lot, um, we have construction plans for when they did, um, new water and sewer lines, um, up Fuller, down Sergeant, um, so we're-
They can work inside the building, materials, flash change-
Oh, has it?
Uh, no, um, we've talked with the, um, in general terms with a contractor who does demolition, they would do the, if, if we went that route, they would do the asbestos review and so forth before they did that, so that the building could be taken down, so.
In the form of a survey yet?
No, not yet.
I would, I would actually advise, as your construction manager, to, to solicit separate proposals for the demo sub, don't ask the demo sub to solicit that, there's a lot of folks, we can help that process, and that's probably the first thing Roland would do, is solicit hazardous material surveys for this building, you can't legally take this building down without completing one first.
Right.
Uh, and you wanna know if there's hazardous materials, for example, if, if there's PCB window caulking or, or some of that extent, if you don't abate that first, you double the building, the whole building is considered hazardous material and it costs that much more to dispose of, so it's very important, and it's for the safety of the folks working as well. They test the roof, they'll test the, uh, drive hall.
I think the roof is fairly new.
Yeah.
Yeah, the roof is fairly new.
It's lashing.
Right, but there is, yeah, yeah.
Is the age in the building?
The age of the building? Old, it was a church.
Thirty-five, hundred and forty years.
Hundred and thirty, forty years.
Some recent concrete over here, some rain.
Yeah, but we've, we've dubbed it up over the years, I mean, we fixed the walkways, we created the entrance ramp, we put some of that floor-
Actually dubbed through, in the basement of the buil-, well, the lower level of the building, we've actually pulled out the floor, or a portion thereof, and had to put in new con- concrete, um-
Base, to, to support the lolly columns, yeah, yeah.
So, there's been various and sundry things done to the building, but we are aware that we need to get all of that done before we can take it down.
You gotta knock it down.
Yeah, we have, we, we have had, we have taken, we have taken down some buildings recently.
We're good at, we're good at most.
We're good at taking them down, getting them back up, you know.
Do you find it hard just to wanna crack that, huh?
Uh, no.
No, we don't, no, 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 no.
Don't go there.
No.
I wanna, we wanna do it this year.
Yeah, yeah.
I got it.
Yeah.
Nice suggestion to do that.
That's definitely a good idea as well.
Well, it was amazing, they did one not too, well, what, a few months ago, Ben, it's amazing what they have to go through to get ready to, um, burn it, you might as well just tear it down.
That was basically a field.
Right, right, this is, uh, yeah, uh-uh, no, no, that's for sure. All right, any other questions, guys? Gene?
No, um, basically, today, um, is the completion of their interview process, um, they will, um, have a conversation with the chief and myself, and, um, I expect that they'll be moving fairly quickly to make a decision, only because we are hoping to get this going, um, we've had contact back from our banks, we've had contact with our bond counsel, so we are, um, we're ready to, we're ready to move forward with, with, um, a process, so.
Well, it's exciting, I'm excited for you folks, uh, we really appreciate this opportunity, uh, hopefully we demonstrated that we're excited about the project, uh, we're fully available and we're ready to hit the ground running, uh, whether it's helping solicit proposals from design firms or hazardous material survey, uh, we're ready to go, uh, and, uh, whether we're fortunate enough to build a project now, I sincerely wish you folks a successful project, so thank you.
Awesome, and we appreciate it, that's for sure, we, we, uh, it's not, you know, it's, it's a process and, you know, trying to do the right thing and, and, it's a lot to it, that's for sure.
Well, I mean, folks, uh, and I wanted to ask, would you folks be, the, the building committee per se, just of the project, would you folks be involved?
Yes, we will be.
Nothing's worse than a client, a client that's not involved.
Oh, no.
Hold on.
No.
He will.
Yeah.
I'll be, I'll be his best friend every day, and he's a good man. I did, I did-
Let's not go there.
I know.
And I'm gonna be-
I'm a great puppy, that's why I'm-
And I'm gonna be behind him with a whip.
It's okay to do something and it costs money, don't you do it until you talk to me.
That's right, you're exactly right.
I live in town, I take dances, you know, I'm gonna be that guy, I'm not, I'm somebody else.